All right, good evening. Thank you for joining us this evening. If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to our special Board of Directors meeting. We're gonna go ahead and start off to adopt our agenda. We'll entertain a motion.
Will we adopt the agenda as presented?
Second. So moving to second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, great. All right, well, next on our agenda, we have special recognition this evening. We are recognizing a couple of things. And the first one is music in our schools. Corinne Ormsen.
Where's she at?
Go on up. So I understand that we have some folks that are from Heritage High School, is that correct? We also have a proclamation that we would like to read. I'm gonna have Director Perkins read that for us.
Proclamation, March is Music in Our Schools Month. Whereas the study of music contributes to young people's development through heightened skills in listening, reading, self-expression, and creativity; and whereas music education in the schools includes a broad range of types of music and the active music experiences; and whereas music and the other arts significantly enhance the morale and quality of the school environment; whereas it is the stated objective of the public school to prepare children for a productive role in our society; and whereas the National Association for Music Education has designated March 2019 as Music in Our Schools Month, focusing on the theme "Music Inspires." Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Directors of Evergreen Public Schools endorses the Observance of Music in Our Schools Month as an opportunity to support the purposes and practices of music education and encourages teachers, parents, students, and all citizens to participate. The Board of Education of the Evergreen Public Schools, for its own part, rededicates itself to the maintenance of a music education program that will be relevant to the needs of the children placed in its care and will reach and positively influence each child. Signed, March 26, 2019. President of the Board of Directors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My turn?
Yes, please.
As the proclamation states, music does indeed inspire. And I have a couple examples to share with you of how our music teachers in our district are leaders at inspiring our region and districts around the state. One of the first examples is we have some elementary teachers that are working with the campus. Elementary teachers and the campus teachers are coming here for learning walks to learn more about the curriculums that we're using and the things that we're doing so that they can improve their experience for their students in campus. It's really exciting to partner with other nearby districts. March Madness is definitely happening right now with festivals. And we have four more actually this week. We had one today and four more this week. One of those is a two-day high school band festival with 28 bands from around the region that will be gathering at Evergreen in the next two days. So lots of teachers bringing excellence with their students to these festivals to share music, to get inspiration and ideas from clinicians and other groups. We had a big music conference, music educators' conference in Portland last month. We had a lot of our teachers attend the conference for professional development, but we also had quite a few that participated in the conference as presenters. One of our elementary teachers presented a session, the Mountain View Brass Quintet, that performed for you in January, I believe. They performed with the Boston Brats onstage and then received a clinic, like an hour-long clinic from them in front of about 200 band directors. So it was a lot of pressure for those students and they really appreciated the opportunity to perform for you for that little practice run. So, last thing, can't forget. Our regional solo and ensemble competition was just also last month and we have some numbers. Let's see, our vocal and the vocal categories, we had five. We, Evergreen students, won five of the seven solo categories and all six of the vocal ensemble categories. Heritage students, will you raise your hand if you're going to state with one of those groups?
All.
And in the band and orchestra side of things, they did just as well. The Evergreen students won 15 of the 19 solo categories and swept all eight ensemble categories. So really powerful showing, which is really exciting. I don't have a proclamation for you, but we did also, our district just won an award and I just received it today from the NAMM Foundation, which is National Association of Music Merchants. And it says, "NAMM Foundation Salutes Evergreen School District for Outstanding Support of Music Education." So that was exciting. It's the first time we've won this award and five districts in Washington received it this year. So, that's exciting. Lucy is going to introduce the two songs that Heritage High School Concert Choir will be performing.
Hi. We're gonna be singing two pieces for you today. The first is entitled "Rocka My Soul," it's spiritual. And the second is "Papaloco." It is a Haitian folk song in which papaloco, the wind, our spirit, carries us, the butterflies. Thank you.
Rocka my, yes, rocka my, yes, rocka my, yes, rocka my soul. Rocka my, yes, rocka my, yes, rocka my, rocka my, rocka my soul. Lordy, rocka my, rocka my, rocka my soul. Lordy, rocka my, rocka my, rocka my soul. My soul, my soul, my soul. Rocka my soul, in the bosom of the Lord, just rock. Rock me in the bosom of Abraham. Rocka my soul, in the bosom, yes, Lordy, rock. Oh, won't you rocka my soul? Rocka my soul, in the bosom of the Lord, just rock. Rock me in the bosom of Abraham. Rocka my soul, in the bosom, yes, Lordy, rock. Oh, won't you rocka my soul? Rockin', rockin', keep on rockin', my soul, yes, rock. Rockin', keep on rockin', my soul. Rockin', rockin', keep on rockin', my soul. Hallelujah, rock. Rockin', keep on rockin', my soul. Well, rich man, tell me, yes, Lordy, oh. Yes, Lordy, when he died. He ran a home in the hills of hell, yes, he did. Rocka my soul, in the bosom of the Lord, just rock. Rock me in the bosom of Abraham. Rocka my soul, in the bosom, yes, Lordy, rock. Oh, won't you rocka my soul? Good boy, man, let's go. Yes, Lordy, when he died. Yes, Lordy, when he died. Yeah, he ran a home with the Lord, and ha, yes, he did. Rocka my soul, in the bosom of the Lord, just rock. Rock me in the bosom of Abraham. Rocka my soul, in the bosom, yes, Lordy, rock. Oh, won't you rocka my soul? Rock me, Lord. Won't you rock me, Lord? Won't you rock me, Lord? Rock me, Lord, rock me, Lord, rock me, Lord. Rock me, Lord, yes, Lord, won't you rocka my soul? Oh, oh, won't you rock me, keep rockin' me? 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 Oh, won't you rock, and you rock, Lordy, rocka my soul? My soul, won't you rock, and you rock, Lordy, rocka my soul?
Papaloco, pusema, puse na le. Nu se pa pio na ponte nu ver payaue. Papaloco, pusema, puse na le. Nu se pa pio na ponte nu ver payaue. E tu sa ki di me? Jemlae. E tu sa ki di mano? Jemlae. Papaloco, puse pa e, o puse na le. Nu se pa pio na ponte nu ver payaue.
Papaloco, pusema, puse na le. O na ponte nu ver payaue. Se pa pio na ponte. Papaloco, puse ma, puse na le. Se pa pio na ponte nu ver payaue. O na ponte. Papaloco, puse ma, puse na le. Se pa pio na ponte nu ver payaue. Jemlae. Sa ki di mano? Papaloco, puse ma, puse na le. Se pa pio na ponte nu ver payaue. O na ponte. Papaloco, puse ma, puse na le. Se pa pio na ponte nu ver payaue. O na ponte. Papaloco, puse ma, puse na le. Se pa pio na ponte nu ver payaue. Sa ki di mano? Jemlae. Papaloco, puse ma, puse na le. Se pa pio na ponte nu ver payaue. O na ponte. Papaloco, puse ma, puse na le. Papaloco, puse ma, puse na le.
Papaloco, puse ma, puse na le. Pa ro papaloco na, puse ma, payaue. Papaloco, puse ma, puse na le. Pa ro papaloco na, puse ma, payaue. Papaloco, puse ma, puse na le. Pa ro papaloco na, puse ma, payaue. Papaloco, puse ma, puse na le. Pa ro papaloco na, puse ma, payaue. Papiyo, se vea, no, no, papiyo, se vea, no. Papiyo, se vea, no, no, papiyo, se vea, no. Papiyo, se vea, no, no, papiyo, se vea, no. Papaloco, puse ma, puse na le. Pa ro papaloco na, puse ma, payaue. Papaloco, puse ma, puse na le. Pa ro papaloco na, puse ma, payaue. Papaloco, puse ma, puse na le. Pa ro papaloco na, puse ma, payaue. Papaloco, puse ma, puse na le. Pa ro papaloco na, puse ma, payaue. Papiyo, se vea, no, no, papiyo, se vea, no. Papiyo, se vea, no, no, papiyo, se vea, no. Papiyo, se vea, no, no, papiyo, se vea, no. Papiyo, se vea, no, no, papiyo, se vea, no. Jesus, I give you, Jemaie, tu sa ki di ma? Jemaie. Papaloco, puse ma, puse na le. Pa ro papaloco na, puse ma, payaue. Papaloco, puse ma, puse na le. Pa ro papaloco na, puse ma, payaue. Papiyo, se vea, no, no, papiyo, se vea, no. Papiyo, se vea, no, no, papiyo, se vea, no. Papiyo, se vea, no, no, papiyo, se vea, no. Papiyo, se vea, no, no, papiyo, se vea, no. Jesus, I give you, Jemaie, tu sa ki di ma? Jemaie.
Oh, wait, we didn't get to talk to them yet. We have things to say in here. That was an incredible performance. You guys are awesome. I'm so proud of you. I just, you know, we've always come into music and from the time, you know, you guys were little ones all the way through. And I love going to the district concerts where you have the elementary schools, middle schools, and then the high schools 'cause I love watching the littles, watching you guys, and being in such awe of what you do and it inspires them to keep going. And, you know, when people hear, we go to conferences and stuff for school reports and they hear what we have, they are really impressed that we do all this. And we've got such amazing teachers that bring all this amazing musical knowledge to you and I'm just so proud of you guys that there's so many of you that stuck it out all the way through. So anyway, I just love you.
Did you all start in elementary school?
No.
From then, no?
Some of us.
Middle school, maybe?
Yeah.
Cool, most of us.
But you're saying you can start though in high school, right?
Yeah.
Good. Maybe like a friend said, hey, come to join choir and...
My counselor, yeah.
Excellent, I like that. Well, it looks like you all really enjoy it and it was a really good performance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Super clear that you enjoyed it. Aye. You basically said it all. Really, that is hard music. That is really, really difficult to learn and to perform and you made it look effortless. I get emotional. I was a choir kid. My last year. I think it'd be silly to compare it because I spent some time with Michael Iverson over at Union, listening to the kids sing there and the things that you're learning were not being presented to us thirty, never mind how many years ago. It's grown in quality so much and it's so nice to have someone, a group from Heritage, coming to really ratify the thing that I've been telling the public all along is that every one of our comprehensive high schools has this world-class music program. I was watching the Union Orchestra and they've done a couple of performances at a church down in Portland. What's the Methodist or Lutheran? I don't know. The teacher has a connection to a choir down there. And we sit there and watch the show and the last time it was Union's orchestra playing like half of Mozart's Requiem. It was like 50 minutes of string instrumental, non-stop. It's the hardest thing they'd ever attempted. Almost as hard as the stuff you're learning. The other members of the audience find out where we're from and that we're connected to that group. They lean in and go, is that a magnet school? Is that a special music school? You go, no, it's a comprehensive high school. How do you get such quality and such performance out of a comprehensive high school? Well, of course, students are awesome. And our community is very supportive and I think the five of us, the six of us, know that probably better than anybody else because we get to listen to these kinds of things. People should go to more of the concerts and just experience. I could talk for hours, just gosh, about how cool it is. But I'm not gonna do that. Thank you for coming in. Thank you for being interested in music. It's gonna carry with you for the rest of your life. I still remember the tunes that we sung and played. What a neat experience and what a great group of performers.
Thank you.
Can I go sort of...
No, I wanna go. You guys were phenomenal, so fantastic. I think I was grinning ear to ear in your entire performance. I also brought back memories from high school and I also, like Rob said, wanna go to your guys' concert. Your next concert, your next bunch of concerts. I think everyone should go. It was so entertaining and I wish my kids were here to watch you guys as well 'cause my daughter loves, both my daughters, love to sing and they would, you guys are just great role models to show people what you can do with, through our schools and their music education. And you guys obviously have a great director and the... Oh, good, I see, that's a naughty head. But those pieces that you showed us, I don't know if those are your hardest or just some of your medium ones, more entertaining or fun ones, but you really, you guys had to work hard to do those but also showed like, I mean, you guys worked hard to show us a very polished piece and the amount of coordination that that took, we know what went into that, but you guys, like Rob said, made that look effortless to us and I'm just so impressed. And I can't believe you guys are high schoolers. Well done, way to go. Thank you guys for coming to us. I just pray by night.
We truly do enjoy having visitors come and perform for us but I think we really get excited when we know that we are going to have choir or performance or presentations. I too, like the rest, was part of choir. Unfortunately, I came from Portland Public so we all know what that story was. So I'm very, very proud of the arts, the music programs that we have in our district and the fact that we continue to rally and support and it is a very top priority for us to continue to make sure that our students have these opportunities. I won't cover everything else everybody else said but I do agree with everything and just wanna say again, congratulations to all of you guys. It is a lot of hard work, we all know and like they said, you make it look effortless and you go out and you compete against all these other schools and you come home with the awards. So that takes a lot of time and dedication. So congratulations, you guys all deserve pat on the backs and we are so proud of you.
I just wanna real quick, I would say something that Victoria brought up. You know, the district has had to go through budget cuts in the past and we're going through it now too. But I'm sure there are students here back in '09, '10, and '11, '12 that would have been impacted had the board decided at that time to make the reductions but for the most part really protected the music program as they should have and continue to do so. I also wanna point out, Mr. Carn, how, everybody needs to know your name because you are the director of the choir and you deserve all kinds of credit for it. I had a son that went to high school with his son years ago. I remember, and he was a good baseball player and a good singer. And he had to, I remember you particularly talking to the baseball coach, just letting him know upfront, hey, if there's a concert, he's gonna be going to the concert, not to the baseball game. It shows how important the music program is in the district. And the last thing I would really quickly say is I'm kinda disappointed in the crowd, not, how could you not have had your heads moving while that music? It was way too, it just was way too calm. But anyway, you guys are awesome.
Thanks, thank you. But I happen to know there's a row here that come, they'll come every year and they wanna come to see what music program we have this year. And they're retired educators and they know about our programs and they look forward to it every year. So you have people who watch for you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now you may go.
You gotta stand there and Karen probably shouldn't.
We need to give you the actual declaration.
All right, next, another special recognition is, Victoria just mentioned it. It is our School Retirees Appreciation Week and I think representing retirees is Jeannie Anderson, if you wanted to come on up to the podium.
I'll be right there. Where did you want me?
Come on up to the podium, yeah. There's a special guest.
Thank you.
And we do have a proclamation that Director Rachel Rogers is going to read for us this evening.
Whereas the Washington State School Retirees Association, WSSRA, recognizes all retired school employees and whereas the WSSRA educates and assists retirees in meeting the special challenges retirement brings and works to improve their general welfare; and whereas the WSSRA aids in advancing education by supporting high educational standards; and whereas the WSSRA promotes group and individual involvement in charitable projects and activities; sponsors scholarships; and maintains interest and participation in educational and community activities; and whereas the WSSRA supports and encourages retired educators to remain active in the education profession through volunteer activities associated with learning. Now, therefore, I, Jay Inslee, Governor of the State of Washington, do hereby proclaim March 18th through 24th, 2019, as School Retirees Appreciation Week in the State of Washington and I encourage all people in our state to join me in this special observance. Signed for this fortunate day of February 2019, by Governor Jay Inslee.
Thank you. Can I speak? Please. As the proclamation says, even though we are not going to schools teaching so much anymore, we have over 500 members in our retired teachers' educators' groups. We are not just for teachers, we are for the secretaries, the school nurses, the guidance counselors because we feel it takes a whole village to work with children and families. We have retired teachers who are active in pen pal letters who go and are part of lunch buddies who work very hard to contribute for our school bank program that we have where a couple of years ago we made backpacks for children. This year, we put out an application form for having the mini-grants that we were going to give and for some reason, we only got a few. So we decided that for one of the applicants, who is the superintendent up at Stevenson-Carson, we would grant her application but we would bump it up and we did not tell her. And another, we told her she earned the application just recently, about two weeks ago. One of the vice president and I went up to Stevenson-Carson and we presented it to her and we're talking. She was showing us the program that she has begun, which is called The Locker, where children and their families can go in, get clothing, shoes, socks, food, some food, some hygiene products. And she also buys cards so that families can go to the swimming pool and have a nice warm shower and swim. And the parents are just overwhelmed. So finally, she looked down at the check we had brought and saw that it was $1,000 and she cried. And it just made our hearts feel really, really good. We also brought out $1,000 to, I don't think it's called a foundation here, but we met with the folks, the volunteer folks who help kids here. We also gave $1,000 to Battleground and to Vancouver because we felt that maybe the principals would like to have a little more discretionary funds and things. I have to tell you that when we have the most people at our luncheons, which are every month except in the summer, we have the most people there when we have some kind of live music. Darcy Schmidt brings her group out for Battleground. Darcy Schmidt brings her group out for Battleground. We've had, we're going to have some people coming this Thursday to sing Irish songs and cabaret songs and their names are Athena, she's quite Greek, so it's going to be interesting, hear her sing her Irish songs, but that's when the people come, when there's music. Music touches our souls and our hearts, so I asked about three or four years ago, please always put us after the music part, because we've heard instrumental and vocal and it's always been wonderful. So, we're happy to be here and be celebrated as retired teachers. We're not sitting home all the time, we're out working a lot with teachers, with students, with retired folks, trying to keep them from being too isolated. That's a big problem for some people. So, we're so glad to be here and I didn't bring a gift today, usually I bring a gift, but I, our group gave $1,000, so we're going to count that this year. I would like to have a picture taken, if that's okay? Is that okay? Why don't you all come on up here and let's get, I'll introduce our, the people that came, my husband Gary Anderson's going to be the photographer. Donna Quinell is coming up, come on you guys. Yeah, come on up. Donna Marley is going to come up, Margaret Schnitzler, and Margaret has an interesting quote, I think. And Loretta Babbitt.
Is there any good else?
I think there's some kind of basketball on or something. Some people have to stay on.
Why don't we have you standing behind the board?
Okay, behind the board.
Careful coming back here, don't trip.
Margaret, what were you going to tell us about the person you noticed when you came in today?
Omen, as a student.
Our understanding is that Mrs. Schnitzler can endure little Billy Omen for a year at Sandy Creek Elementary, is that right?
He was in my classroom.
Okay. You ready there, Mr. Anderson?
You good?
I'm good.
Okay. We're good.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for the work that you're doing and still, that you have done in the past in schools and that you're still doing to support our teachers, our community, our students. We really appreciate it and it's always fun to have you here.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you guys so very much for coming in and accepting the proclamation for today. We know you don't have to come in and it's always great to have anybody come visit us when it's good news. And thank you for everything you did, have done and are still doing for our schools and all of the schools across Washington.
Thank you.
And we'll always keep music first, right? And you have something to look forward to when you come, right?
Yes.
Well, if we get music every time you guys come, can you come every month? Yeah, we wouldn't mind that either, having music every month. We don't, but we'd like to. So if you come, maybe they'll come.
I don't think so. Thanks very much.
All right, next on our agenda is Board Consent Agenda, but before we get to that, I noticed that we had some scouts join us this evening and we like it when scouts come to our board meetings, so we would appreciate if you would maybe introduce yourselves and tell us what badge you're working on, what school you go to.
Should I go up to the mic?
Oh, you can.
Howdy, I'm Kenny, I'm from troop 462. I'm currently working on citizenship in the community, sorry, I looked down at that. And I come from the Evergreen School River.
Which high school?
Oh, Legacy.
Great name, thank you.
Hello, my name is Matthew Rettson and I'm working on citizenship in the community and I go to Y's Middle.
My name's Andrew King, I go to, I'm working on citizenship in the community and I go to Union.
Well, my name is Evan Anderson, yeah, troop 462, citizenship in the community and I go to Columbia River High School, so that's basically.
My name is William Picasso and I'm working on citizenship in the community and I go to Shenala.
Great, thank you, thank you for joining us. If you have any questions afterwards, two will be available, if you want to come up and ask those questions, okay? Are these two young gentlemen scouts also?
Different scout troop, but yeah.
Oh, I tried to, me, but we don't turn any scout groups.
I'm working on communication and citizenship in the community as well.
And what school do you go to, sir?
Union.
Thank you.
My name is Austin, I go to Union and I'm working on citizenship in the community.
Thank you. Paul Jenny.
They tipped me off.
Yeah. All right, next is Board Consent Agenda. We will entertain a motion. I move that we accept the Board Consent Agenda.
Second.
It's moved and seconded, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Great. All right, next is Superintendent Consent Agenda. Again, we'll entertain a motion for this.
Move the adoption of the superintendent's consent agenda as presented.
It's moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. All right, next is Superintendent Report and for this, we will call on interim Superintendent Merlino.
Yes, so I want to just mention a few things. I'll start with, we had a budget kind of conversation on the budget. We had three community forums. Our fourth community forum is two nights from tonight, Thursday night at 6 o'clock at Mountain View. They have been, I think, very well attended, both by staff and the school board, you guys have been at them as well. I would mention, one of the really nice things about this has been the, kind of the format, the forum type of a format where we've kind of given a little, I've given a little presentation about the budget and then we have, at that point, broke up into various tables around the group, the libraries in the schools we've been to, which has allowed us to take a lot of information. There's kind of four basic questions that people respond to. The website, we have a website now that Gail made live, I think either yesterday or today, that has the presentation, it has the Q and A, so one of the things is what kinds of questions are there that we're not answering? So there's a Q and A that we have. In addition to that, for each of the nights, there's a link to the actual comments that are made. There's a Google form that keeps track of all of the tables' information and, you know, it's really been, it's really been great and I think it's been really well received. Even to the point that I was on the phone, myself and Gail were on the phone today with Spokane School District. Spokane has seen some of the feedback that we've received and some of the media that we've received and actually was kind of reaching out to us and saying, you know, what has the process been? We're not as far along as you are, we'd like to mimic or emulate, you know, kind of go along with what you've been doing a little bit. So that was, I think, kind of a nice conversation we had this afternoon with the superintendent and their CFO and their media person. I would also mention really quickly that we have today, so we've talked a little bit about kind of reconstituting instructional cabinet. We had our first kind of meeting of a new instructional cabinet today, myself and Bill and Jay and Scott, and then we added three elementary principals, that's Aaron Lucic, Judy DeRocher, and Angie Mitchell, and then Griffin Payton from Frontier in the middle school and Julie Tumulty from the high school. And it's really kind of talking about, we had a conversation about what used to be kind of the non-negotiables of the district and what are the focus points that we have and they really actually align really well with the board's beliefs. So the board has published a belief statement and beliefs this is, we believe this, and so we're kind of trying to line up the instructional cabinet on instruction that fits that as well. So it was just kind of about a 45-minute meeting today or an hour-long meeting where we're talking about using the P-12 time for planning for the rest of this year and also for next year, but I think it was a good, good start with that. The last thing I would mention is, you're aware that we had purchased some land just to the east of Burton Elementary, there was a house that we purchased. We entered into an agreement with the Vancouver Fire Department, they're going to actually use that for some training. So, no, they're not going to be fired, there's just, there's just going to be training. But between the 8th and the 11th of April, in case you happen to drive by and see a lot of fire trucks, get the fire truck and the agreement, everything's been vetted with our insurance company, so everything's, everything's good, they're going to be using it. But it felt like that was a good way to be partners with the Fire Department, give them an opportunity as we get rid of the building that's on that site, they can be part of that, so just in case you see fire trucks.
Don't panic.
Don't panic. I mean, sometimes if you see fire trucks, people rush to the place, they're interested in seeing the firemen, but I'll leave that up to you, how you want to deal with that. Anyway, that's all I have for my superintendent's report.
Great.
Interim Superintendent's report.
The scouts will want to be over there keeping an eye on things. Is there a fire badge?
Yes, there is. How many merit badges are there?
137.
137?
137.
That's a lot. That's a lot.
That's perseverance.
You only have to get 22 of them.
Oh, you'll have to get 22? All right.
Even if you're a scout. Oh, so you get to choose?
That's the, you get to choose. There's the basic citizenship ones and then camping and safety and stuff and then you choose something like, now you count others, you just follow your interests.
Eight, there's 13 required and then there's eight.
It's changed on some eagle.
That's the minimum, I think the average in our troop is probably about 35 to 40.
I was going to say, most of the guys I see get their eagle, they usually have a lot more on that.
All right, next is the Good News Report, so we're going to call up Executive Director of Communications, Gail Spoeler, to give us all the good news.
Thank you. We were honored last week to attend the Marshall Youth Leadership Awards. We had several students nominated and we had two finalists of the seven finalists and we were delighted that Nicole Nugent from Hila High School was selected as this year's Leadership Award recipient. She's a very talented young woman, well, all of the nominees were, but we will be featuring her in a video story shortly and you will hear about how she split DNA over the summer at OHSU on an internship and she's just, she's extremely talented. She also has served as a docent at Marshall House, so she was very conversant at George Marshall, so she did us proud, as did all of the nominees last week. Speaking again of doing us proud, we had 16 winners at the annual Southwest Washington Regional High School Art Show at ESD 112. A number of those winners will be heading on up to state representing us. I read all of their names and the names of their artwork, but it's really better if you go online at ESD 112 and look at them and you can see a small sample that we included, but as always, very talented. I had the pleasure of being asked to judge our very first Evergreen Junior Chef Champion, kind of like a cook-off, an Iron Chef competition with some of our 4th and 5th graders from around the district. Hayden Paulsy won, she did a dish that is named after her dad, Brian's special, and when we did principal for a day on Friday, which I've actually gone to the cafeteria because it was actually served in the schools throughout the district last week, so a really interesting time watching these very capable 4th and 5th graders chop, dice, saute, cook, roll, and present some pretty fascinating recipes.
What was the, like, what was the dish, like?
What was Brian's special?
It was in a bowl and it had noodles and, and, well, it was a bowl, noodles and a tur, ground turkey and some other things.
You were one of the judges?
I was one of the judges. There was, I think there were like 14 things, so y'all have to excuse me if I remember everything, but it was, I actually had more fun back there watching them prepare, I'll say, there was some deliciousness in that, so that was fun. I highly encourage you, the next time this comes around, to sign up to be a judge. That would be fun. Over President's Weekend, on that Monday of President's Weekend, we had several of our students, along with our Connect Evergreen Coalition, head up to Olympia and they met with Representative Paul Harris and Sharon Wiley and then staff members with Senator Annette Cleveland's office. They advocated for raising the legal age to purchase tobacco and baking products to 21. They were very interested in improving the mental and physical healthcare access for teens and then they also are looking for increased funding prevention programs. So these are young people that are working very closely with the Connect Evergreen Coalition and really starting to look at programs here as well as how they can influence on a state level. We have two high school teams headed to Nationals. Let's see, Rob, where's the Union High School Robotics Team going?
They're going to Houston, Texas.
Yes.
I'm going to follow them there at my own expense.
But, very talented and they came home as state champions on March 17th, so they will be heading to Houston shortly. Mountain View High School's DECA team had five students qualify for their national conference and they will be headed to Orlando, Florida. Then, it's always fun to go out when Timber Joey's in the gym. Columbia Valley welcomed Timber Joey for National Reading Month and he talked with students about the importance of having healthy bodies and sharp minds and encouraged them to practice good exercise and reading habits. Another, another group that did well at state, Shenala Middle School, in the state math council competition. Eric Zahn, a 7th grader, finished sixth best in the state and the team finished seventh in the state. Heritage High School students participated in a school cleanup event with 52 students and nine staff members giving up a Saturday morning to pick up litter from around the school property in their local neighborhood. And over at Bill Plaine Elementary, the school student council raised $1,400 for the Premium Lymphoma Society. And then, we have to recognize Susan Mangan, CTE teacher at Heritage High School, she's the recipient of the Washington Industrial Technology Education Association Teacher of the Year. She, as many of you know, is a registered architect and has taught for 16 years and teaches architecture, engineering, and manufacturing at Heritage High School. So, lots of good news that I didn't share, so please feel free to continue reading. Thank you.
I just have to say that I am really, this is three pages.
I know.
This is incredible.
Busy time of the year.
Just a couple of hours.
Didn't we have a classified employee named Employee of the Year or something? Marie is, I don't know if that's in there or not?
No.
Sorry.
They just, they just let us know internally and they'll be announcing it, but yes, ESD 112, that's okay. That'll be next month, now, now it's not going to be for next month. Maurice, a parent educator at Mountain View High School, we were just informed yesterday that she is the ESD 112 Classified Employee of the Year, so she will be going up to state and celebrating with the other eight ESD employees and potentially could be Employee of the Year for state, so very proud of her.
Yeah, that's awesome.
And you don't have to sound like you just heard it next month.
That's like a good news spoiler.
You shouldn't send me emails.
That's quite all right. All right, how about a budget update, Mike?
Yes, so I want to, there's two documents that you have in your packet, they're the ones that we typically have been looking at. The first looks at enrollment, estimates for the year, and then how that drives out to staffing. When you look at the enrollment for the year, between the elementary, middle, and high school, we're within about 27 of what we had budgeted, so we're budgeting somewhere around 23,000 to 24,000 students and I think we're within 27 of that number, over by 27. So our enrollment projections in terms of the regular education program and even, I think, almost across the board, have been relatively, really close to what we thought where we would be. We kind of anticipated in the fall that we might have some pressures financially, so in areas where we could staff below what the staff had, would be driven out, like in elementary in particular and a little bit in the middle school, we did that, so we're within about 2.7 staff overall in terms of what we actually... 2.7 staff overall in terms of what we actually have in the buildings for regular education, basic education versus what was allocated. Special ed, both classified and certificate have tracked really closely. And in a, in a normal year, that's, I mean, in any year, that's great when you, when you are tracking that closely to what had been estimated. Earlier in the year, I was kind of anticipating that, when you look at the second document, which is actually the budget document, where we look at what was budgeted, where we are as of the most recent month and then what the estimated final. I was estimating earlier that we may be somewhere in the 20 million, like our fund balance was going to drop about three or four million dollars this year. I think that the, when the board made the, basically, freeze, that helped us. We've kind of had good things occur in terms of financially and I talked earlier about the transportation, the fact that we're fully funded in transportation, the fact that we have kind of, just kind of put halt to expenditures leads me to believe that while we still probably see a little bit of a reduction in our fund balance, I think it's more like that we only go down about a million dollars as opposed to three or four million, which is real positive as that gives us more flexibility when we're looking at the budget for 1920. I would also add that one of the things that affected that is recently we applied for the Safety Net for the Special Ed program and I think that the application was almost $1.9 million. That's the largest number we've ever requested. What that means is we've got a lot of really high-cost students, but it also is, a lot of work goes into that from the compliance clerk to the teacher to the, everybody in the system to identify those costs so that we can receive as much back as we can from the state. So that was something also that's a little higher than what we had expected. And as I've said previously, pretty much every month I go through and make estimates. I'll do the same thing. We just finished March payroll. I think it just got done running for about 20 hours, it seems like, or something. So that completed this afternoon, which means we'll update with March estimates here soon. And those things are really key in helping us determine where we think we're going to be next year as we deal with the shortfall. We did receive, the legislature, the first budget came out, the House budget came out yesterday. I would not say it was overwhelming in terms of what it does to help us. We're still kind of working through some of those things. We've been pushing really hard for Special Ed funding. I don't, the amount of money that the Senate had passed in a bill that we had gone up, I had gone up with other folks to try to let individuals in the legislature know, we didn't believe that the Senate's bill, which put about $85 billion new into the state, was enough to really cover the shortfall that we're dealing with across the state. I think it's more like a $300 million shortfall statewide. The House budget, which we thought was going to come in with a larger number for Special Ed was 76 million, so actually lower than what had come through. So we'll continue to advocate and we'll continue to work on that and hopefully make headway when they get to the point of the final budget. With that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
The vehicle bill for Special Ed funding has started in the Senate and it's in the House now.
Yeah, correct. I think the bills were, this was just the budget that they were, what are they putting in? And they had, so we're funded right now like a multiplier of 96.9609. So for every Special Ed student, you get the full basic ed allocation and then you get another 96.09% of the basic ed allocation to support Special Ed. The Senate bill that was the vehicle had increased that 96.09 to 1.00. We had asked for that to be 1.07. The House came back with, I think, 0.9925, so it's actually below the 1.0. They, I think they want to do some things to try to help with the Safety Net also, but we've never really seen any specifics around that. Safety Net reform would help us, but it's just a matter of understanding exactly what the reform might be.
Every year.
Every year. This is, there's not an end. We just always continue to work hard for, and that's what we just, we just have to.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, board comments. Any of the members of the board want to make some comments? Do we have anything? I know we've all been busy doing stuff, attending the community forums, which have been great.
Well, you, myself and Ginny were at the H Rock and we, we were on a panel talking about, we didn't even know we were going to be on the panel, but we prevailed and were part of the discussion on economic development and we did our part about how schools are part of the economic development of the community and what role we play. And so that went well. We had another principal for a day, which always is an interesting and fun, fun event to meet with community members that come in and are with the principal and get to see what school is real, is like now. And they always find it eye-opening and so that was interesting. And then we had the foundation gala, which was fun. I think all of us got put in jail.
Yeah.
Had to get, you know.
All for a good cause.
Failed out. So that was.
Bring water in jail.
Probably have ready water in jail. That was it.
That was good, actually.
So I think that was it that I had. It was fun.
Yeah, we have been busy. I think we've got some, a couple of more busy weeks ahead and.
Yeah. School improvement plan meeting.
Lots going on.
Talked about. Oh, that, I got a chance, I had, through connection through Leadership Park Academy, I learned that one of the CWI teachers at Evergreen needed community members who knew about technology to come in and talk to some students who were making a study of the social consequences of new technology. And Sophia Lee at Evergreen had me talking to groups of students in her first and second period classes this last week. Amazing conversation with these, just really aware, young people who are worried about the future and optimistic about the future all at the same time. Had all these complex questions for me about what I thought about whether technology was helping or hurting us. And they led me through some of the most engaging and relevant conversations that I've ever had on the subject. And that's saying something for a 30-year technologist. I left that and stopped worrying about the future. The kids are, when we set it up right for them, they're going to be able to take on the world. I saw great evidence of that in some basic education CWI classes. Really gave me some confidence. At Evergreen at the same time, there was also an exchange student group from Japan, complete with school uniforms. It was an entire like school delegation coming to Evergreen. They had their students hosting that and walking around and it was just neat to see, be in a high school and see some things going right.
And they had a principal for a day there, that same day.
They did. They had Sharon.
They had a lot going on.
They had, they had Sharon Passit.
Passit.
Passit. Sorry, Sharon. From Partners in Careers going through the school and she had a lot of really neat things to say as a former teacher about Evergreen High and wants us to all go see the security guard's office. It's supposed to be pretty interesting. There was that. There was my exposure to the arts programs through the Union performance and I already talked about the choir thing. And of course, on Thursday, I headed to Olympia to talk to legislators as part of the WASTA legislative rep work. I'll be there all day and if I'm late to the budget town hall, it's because there was either traffic or Monica Stonier and I kept talking about stuff, which.
Which could happen.
Which could happen. It's last in the day for her. It's going to be a good time.
We'll have you covered. Don't worry. We'll be there. One other thing that we, that we just did last night is we got an update on the work for the bond and our, the new schools that are being placed and some exciting stuff happening there. We're finally going to see some groundbreaking next month and I think from there it'll, we'll start seeing some schools being built.
Yeah, today I actually had my Cal mentoring at Legacy. And so when I got there, I went to check in the office and I was so excited to talk to Laura about, you know, the new school and how cool it looked. And then she wasn't there. So then I had to go into mentoring and talk to all the police officers at VPD about the new school and how cool it was. Pulled it up on my phone, "Can you tell I'm excited?"
We have a Legacy student here.
Moving that thing from the double wides on the hilltop over into something that looks like a high school, an identity of the high school.
It's number 2021. There will be a new Legacy High School.
It's cool. Yeah, we're excited about it.
And yeah, I am going to, my son is on the robotics team, as you know, so I'm going to Houston as a mentor and.
When is that?
And a dad.
And a dad. And it's going to be 16th of April through Sunday the 21st. So they actually, they actually fly home on Easter Sunday.
Interesting.
It's exciting.
When they, when they drew the wildcard thing two years ago, it was an amazing experience for them. And now they're there having one, the competition. There's so many reasons to be proud of the kids district-wide.
It's going to be cool.
Send pictures and you can watch the competition on Twitch.
On Twitch?
Yeah, online streaming.
Twitch is.
Twitch TV.
Twitch TV.
Mike, are you over there twitching?
Yeah.
I tried to really twitching in all class.
All right.
It's not enough. The internet's not far.
That's why we have you here, Rob, to help us with the terminology.
Is that 7:33? I just really caught a cast channel.
No, it's not.
It's not.
I'll give you an internet link. You can watch the robots on around.
There you go.
All right, any future agenda items from the board? We have enough to keep us busy for now?
Yeah.
All right, so at this time, we will go into recess where we will sign papers. We will reconvene for a board workshop, which will be in this room. We will have U-Cura training, is that right? Is that how you say that? I was calling it U-Cur, but I know it's not that.
U-Cur.
U-Cura. We'll do a review of asset preservation program. We'll get another budget update. We'll do operational expectation OE9, communicating with the public. We'll get legislative update, a superintendent's update. We'll have a board meeting debrief and then the board will go into executive session for review of the performance of the public employee. Thank you.